The October 16, 2025 Planning Commission hearing. I will call this hearing to order at 1:00 PM. Ms. Carmen, can we please have roll call?
Thank you, Chair Wardlow. I will begin with Chair Wardlow.
Here.
Commissioner Barnwell.
Here.
Commissioner Bauckey.
Here.
Commissioner DeLucio.
Here.
Commissioner Wiscombe.
Here.
We have quorum. Thank you.
Thank you, and let's get started with preliminary matters. Requests for continuances, withdrawals, postponements, or ex-agenda items. Ms. Arsenyega, do we have any?
Thank you, Chair Wardlow. We do the second item, or item four on today's agenda, 816 Casique Street. The people assisting the homeless path update is being postponed to November 6, Planning Commission.
Thank you. And do we have any other announcements or appeals?
We do not. Thank you.
Thank you, and that takes us to item C, comments from members of the public pertaining to items that are not on today's agenda. Does anyone have any public comment?
Thank you, Chair Wardlow. At this time, we do have one speaker slip for in-person public comment, so Rick Clausen, if you would like to approach the podium. You'll have two minutes.
Thank you very much. My name is Rick Clausen. I'm here to comment on the content and the conduct of last week's meeting regarding the concept review item. I have never felt better represented by a city commission than I felt last week. I apologize if that collective commission effort goes into every discussion item. I just haven't been watching enough meetings. All of your comments were right on target about the project. Thank you for all of them. Thank you Vice Chair Boss, in absentia, for the way that you ran the meeting. You could give lessons to chairs of other commissions. Thank you Commissioner Wiscombe for your seeming encyclopedic attention to the few firm details available for the project. Thank you Commissioner Barnwell for your passionate comments based on your long experience. Thank you Commissioner DeLucio for your plain-spoken comments, even though I disagree with you on the height limits. I attended last night's open house on the project and found Commissioner Bauckey's comments true to my own experience. It was more a meet-and-greet, a charm offensive by the developer than actual town hall emphasizing public feedback. Thank you Commissioner Bauckey for highlighting that trend. I'll conclude with a short 19-second prerecorded comment from other Santa Barbans like me.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. With that, I do not have any more speaker slips for in-person public comment, so I will move to virtual participation. If anyone online would like to participate, you can raise your hand at this time. Though I'm not seeing any raised hands, and we did not receive any written correspondence under general public comment, so I'm going to give it back to you.
Thank you, and we will now close general public comment, and we will move on to item 3, 404 Moffett Place, Santa Barbara Airport, request to initiate a zoning map amendment. And we have, I believe, Jessica Metzger from the Airport Planner with us to provide a brief presentation.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair and Commissioners. My name is Jessica Metzger, Airport Planner, and I have with me today the Airport Supervising Engineer Brad Clinsing. We are here today to do an initiation of a possible zoning map amendment for a part of the airport parcel. And just to give you an overview of the airport, since you don't have that many projects with us that often, this is the airport parcel. Unlike parcels in the downtown area, it's one large parcel that is encompassing many different uses. The proposed site for the zoning map amendment is shown in the star on the screen. And then I also put a couple pictures of the site up there for you as well, since due to inclement weather, we had to cancel our site visit this week. This parcel of the airport is in the local coastal program for the coastal plan of the airport and the Galita Slough. There are two land uses in that plan, major public and institution, and recreational open space. The major public and institution holds all airport operations, and the recreation and open space is an area that is for the Galita Slough and the Galita Slough Ecological Reserve. The current zoning of the site, shown in the red hash line there, is airport approach operations. Airport approach operations is normally for uses associated with aircraft themselves. We are asking for a zoning map amendment to airport facility. Airport facility is more of a zoning designation for airport relations with customers, for things that deal with the terminal. So parking lots, the terminal itself, terminal-associated uses like rental car lots. And so that is the blue area there on the map. And then the entire parcel that I've shown on the last two slides is also in the coastal zone, and that is not proposed to be changed with this initiation. So here is a zoomed-in look at the area in question. Currently, the uses include some vacant land that you'll see that's grassed there with a manhole that accesses the Galita West Sanitary District easement and lines that run through the airport property, as well as a small portion of apron for the three hangers that you see inside that green square. The hangers that are there are pretty dilapidated and not really in use that often. A couple actually were taken down from the most recent Google Earth picture, and this is the newest one from just a month ago. So when we started looking at this project, there were more shown there, but I went out on the site, and they weren't there anymore. And then to the south of the project is the Galita Slough area, and then to the west is the City of Galita. So the street there that you see on the picture is our city limits, or east, I'm sorry. And the west is the Galita Slough. So the zoning compliance for this, in our local coastal plan for the airport in the Galita Slough, we currently allow both airport facilities and airport operation area zoning in that same land use designation of public and facilities. And currently, the airport operation area does not allow parking because it's for aircraft, not for thinking of customers with cars. And so that's why we are looking at initiating a zoning map amendment, so we can study it more for future parking. And it is compliant with the coastal zone, as I've spoken to before. Major public and institutional allows both the zone that has now and the zone that we're For environmental review, that would be done on the project level when we're in for the formal rezone application. And so this is simply an information collection according to SEQA Section 15306. So we are recommending approval of this initiation, so we can study the parking lot that would include this area along with a larger portion of the area to the north of the proposed rezone. And this entire development of the new possible long-term parking lot would come before you again with that formal zoning map amendment, as well as a coastal development permit. So you would see the whole package for the development at this time. And then, as we were looking at the case this morning, we determined that we should also do a local coastal program amendment. And so we'll be bringing that back to the Planning Commission as a consent item prior to the formal zoning map amendment package to do those together with the coastal development permit, if that makes sense. And that concludes my presentation. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and I assume we do not have another presentation. This is it?
This is it, yes. Madam Chair.
All right. Wonderful. Well, thank you very much. And that takes us to members of the public pertaining to this item. Ms. Carmen, do we have any public comment?
Thank you, Chair Wardlow. At this time, I do not have any speaker slips for in-person public comment, so I will turn my attention to virtual participation. If anyone online would like to speak on this item, you can raise your hand at this But I'm not seeing any raised hands, so I will acknowledge that we received written correspondence from Paulina Khan and give it back to you.
Thank you very much, and I will now open it up to my fellow commissioners for questions.
I have a quick question.
The screen isn't showing us.
Commissioner Bauckey is first on my list. I'll come look at what's wrong with yours.
Just a couple of quick ones. Could you explain why the property in question wasn't zoned AF Oz or whatever initially? I mean, why are we here? Why wasn't that thought through at the time? It just seems odd that, looking at the way these boundaries are drawn, that they would have done that.
Yes, through the Chair, Commissioner Bauckey. So originally, when these hangers were built and very functional, we needed a way of getting to those hangers. So the best that we determined when looking at this zoning, which has been in effect for quite a long time, so unsure what they were thinking back then, is that they never anticipated needing parking this far to the south of the terminal and thought that because they had this apron to these hangers here, that it would be appropriate to be airport aircraft operations.
Okay. Thank you. That is my question.
Commissioner Barnwell?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm supportive of this, but I have some questions. Was the Airport Commission part of this discussion, or have they? We didn't see any notes of the Airport Commission on this topic. Have they not addressed it yet?
Yes, through the Chair, Commissioner Barnwell. So the Airport Commission is not a land use authority in zoning amendments or our general plan or local coastal program. They have seen this project from a budget standpoint. For two years now, it's been on our budget for the airport. So they are aware of it, and they've actually seen it more laid out than we have shown you today. They've seen the 2010% design of the parking lot.
How does a land use change like this begin?
If I can rephrase your question so I understand, Commissioner Barnwell, you mean, where does the antithesis take place?
Whose idea was it first? How did it begin its process? And then how did it find its way here?
Okay. So when we started looking at our budget a couple years ago, we were in Brad, Mr. Clinsing can jump in, we were looking at ways to end our economy lot parking. It's off-site from the airport. We have to pay for a shuttle to run every year, which is quite expensive. And FAA guidelines state that parking for the terminal is preferred to be closer to the terminal, and in airports of our size, obviously, bigger airports have different guidelines. And so we started looking at new parking. And last year, we completed, actually, let me get to another slide for you. Last year, we completed a parking lot adjacent to the terminal here that moved the rental cars and gave more long-term parking to customers. And because of the success of that parking, we looked at the feasibility of continuing the parking down further to the south here. So it's in conjunction with our budget and with engineering, and if Mr. Clinsing has anything else to add.
Okay, so budget concerns triggered the initial conversation. And how can we bring the long-term parking closer and remove some of the shuttle?
That is correct.
Does this, how does this acreage compare as a replacement for the existing old drive-in movie theater lot where we now park? As far as, you know, parking stall count, are we fully replacing it? It looks like this is much smaller.
Commissioner Barnwell, as far as the economy lot, the current off-site lot, that is roughly 550 parking spaces. And so the proposed lot is going to add 530 or so spaces. However, there are an existing 90 or so spaces there. So when you combine the existing lot and the proposed lots for this long-term lot, we are going to be over the economy lot amount.
Okay. Now, since you said that the planning, excuse me, that the Airport Commission is not a planning commission, I would like to plant a couple of seeds for you. If you would go, well, I guess, I guess what you have on this, there's another map. You see, I want to talk about the map that you have up there right now. And the green that comes down appears to suggest that that is the Galita Slough area. Your next map, or your prior map, I'm not sure which, has the Galita, there you go, has the Galita Slough moving further to the east underneath the purple? The prior map, just two seconds ago, does not have the Galita Slough moving in that direction to the east. Now, and I also noticed that the gray of this map right here, while it is the Galita Slough recreational zoning, it is also the AAO in the gray. Now, my question is this, to go back, do you have a little more of a detail aerial of your little red square there? The one where you showed us the buildings? Yes. Now, due south in this drawing is the viewing area, the public viewing area, which is kind of sort of cute, but it could use some work, which we all know. In your discussion of planning, moving that green line, bottom green line, down to the bottom of what we see as our TV screen, would include some extra area and include the view The extra area, which is immediately south of that green line, as you know, is used as a storage lot. You dump soil there, you have tanks temporarily dropped off there. So it isn't technically, even now, being used as a purely Galita Slough Recreation Area parcel, because we're using it for utility storage. So I would strongly urge you to think about extending that and doubling that size and including the view site, the viewing area, in part of your planning process, because it's been a, you know, it's been a stepchild, and it really should be more than it is. And as we go to the local coastal plan to expand, which you just said we're going to have to do, I think part of the excellence of your plan would be to expand that public outreach area where the public can see the Galita Slough, in addition to which, it will give you twice the land that you have down here for other things to do with. And I just, I plant this as a seed in your, in your thought process. Expand this a little bit. You're going to go through this whole thing anyway, right? You're going to go through this process. If you could get a little more land and include that view site and make it far more open to the general public's enjoyment, I think you would, you would be scoring more points. And then also, and I mentioned this to the Chair a moment ago, if the commission, the Airport Commission, is not a planning commission, then you might give consideration to bringing some of your ideas holistically and large, macro, on what you intend to do to this commission, because we've worked on that for years and years and years, including everything north of Hollister and including it around both of the theaters. And there's a lot of land there, and the City of Santa Barbara could utilize that land in a variety of ways. So if your commission is not a planning commission, I would, I would suggest that we are, and we would love to help you look at the future for the airport.
Thank you, Commissioner. We, of course, would love your input, too. And I think with the timing, we finished our master plan right before you came on to the Planning Commission, so you didn't get to see our next five-to-20-year plan. But we'd be happy to meet with you one-on-one and give you a tour of the airport, too, to go over that with you.
I was part of that, and I felt then, and I'm repeating myself now from what I said back then, there's much more going on out there, and anyway.
Commissioner Barnwell, I think we're getting a little far field.
I don't want to get into that, because that's not, that's not on the agenda right now. I just want to stick to this particular, this particular parcel. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Barnwell. Commissioner DeLucio?
I don't know if I remember my question. Anyway, I'm going to pack up a second. I didn't get, we didn't have the visit, and I sort of went over there yesterday. I don't know if I went to the right place, but the part that we're rezoning, you want to use that to build a parking structure, correct?
Through the Chair, Commissioner, no, this is a surface parking lot.
Oh, it's adjacent to the one there now, correct? Where the rental cars are?
Commissioner, it is almost adjacent. There's a slight area in between. I'll go to the center. If you see where my cursor is, this is still open and not parking.
Okay.
Right here.
So where's the, where's the check-in parking right now for the rental cars? That's where I went in that lot. And that's adjacent to?
That's right here.
That's adjacent to the old rental building, correct? In back of the old rental building. Is that what we're, is that what you're talking about, the surface spots? There's, where they used to go rent the cars was, there was a build, a row of buildings, little buildings, and in back is, is a parking lot, correct? You go inside the terminal now to rent the cars, but in the old days, you would go into a building adjacent to the airport, correct?
Through the Chair, Commissioner, I'm not sure about the rental cars being outside.
I went in there where you checked your car, you went there, and all the rental agencies checked your cars back in, in this surface lot. You're not familiar with that?
That's correct.
Is that the lot, is that the adjacent lot to where they want to expand, the surface parking?
Farther down.
Yeah, so it's not, it's not adjacent.
It's not, it's almost, it's in that direction. But you guys know what I'm talking about. Okay, that's where I went. I didn't go all, I didn't go down that far, so. I'll ask my next question. So when, so you're going to be moving all the, is the parking currently is on the other side of Hollister? Is that where it's now, the long-term lot?
Commissioner DeLucio, yes. So the economy lot is on Hollister.
So I have that correct. Okay.
Yes. And we're going to pull up a Google Maps to kind of show the area.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that. So you're going to be moving that over across the street? When you, if we rezonate, then you'll be moving that parking across the street?
Correct. The intent is to relocate.
Is there a potential, what are you going to do with that vacant land at that point?
So the exact use of that has not been decided upon yet. We do have the master plan update that looked at that area as well, so there is some potential there. And then we, we also have a specific plan for that area as well.
Would that be a potential for housing, or is that too close to the airport?
That is too close to the airport, Commissioner. There is federal regulations that state that the airport, any owned airport property cannot have housing.
Even, oh, okay. So what is that currently zoned, that piece of property, across the street?
The economy lot is part of our specific plan, and I would have to double-check with the zoning.
That's fine. That's fine, yeah, I was just curious if we can consider it for housing in the future, but you're saying no?
No, it's owned by us.
Okay. And you're going to show me where I should have been?
Okay.
If you can, don't worry if you can't.
So the Southfield project, which was before you for a coastal development permit about three and a half to four years ago, I'm going to draw it with my mouse here, included this whole area. We took down this old hangar, it was relocated, that also came before the planning commission, and is almost completed through its structural building permit in the city of Galita. And so the parking kind of ends right about here. And so the next stage, which would be part of the coastal development permit that you see, would be parking all the way down to our little piece right here.
I definitely didn't go there yesterday. No, I'm supportive of this, I'll just say that, but before it does come back to us, we definitely need to make an appointment so I can visualize on, on the property what we're talking about, but...
Yes, through the chair, happy to help.
But conceptually, I, I am in favor of this. And I wasn't here, thank God, three or four years ago, so I, this did not come before me, that portion of it, otherwise it'd really...
Thank you, Commissioner DeLucio. Commissioner Wiscombe.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just had a couple of quick questions. What's the timeline on this? When, when would you expect, assuming this, you know, sails through, when would you expect the parking to be relocated here, the long-term parking?
Yes, through the chair, Commissioner Wiscombe, at this point in time, we still need to do more design on the parking lot itself. So we're looking at that getting to a percentage that we could successfully submit our coastal development permit and have all of the conditions we need for construction somewhere, probably at the beginning of summer next year to you. So that's just getting those final steps for the coastal development permit from planning commission and the zoning map amendment and the local coastal program amendment, then we still would have to go to city council. So there's still a process in front of us for this project, this is just the very first step.
And then is, is construction basically the automated entry and exits and striping? Is that pretty much what we're looking at?
Through the chair, Commissioner, also landscaping.
Pardon?
Also landscaping.
Oh, okay, yeah.
And lighting.
Yeah. And how far from the terminal is this?
Through the chair, Commissioner Wiscombe, we actually did a walk when we were determining if this was the best spot for the parking, and it was equal distance from the terminal doors to the edge of the existing long-term parking here to the east as it was to the end down here. So about seven to five minutes, depending on your pace.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
That's all I have, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Wiscombe. Commissioner Peterson.
Thank you, I just have a couple of questions. Thank you so much for your presentation today. Is it true that this is supposed to replace the other economy lot? Will the other economy lot not be in use?
Through the chair, Commissioner Peterson, we will still have the economy lot in case our passenger numbers increase during those holiday areas, like Thanksgiving and Christmas, we might need overflow, or we might be transitioning employees to that lot, that hasn't been determined yet, it's too early in the process.
Okay. And is the prohibition on housing, the federal regulations, does that include the other economy lot?
Yes, it does.
Okay. All right. And then for the new parking lot, which you intend to build if you go through all of this, is there going to be walkway considerations? Are you going to plan for like pedestrian access? Because I notice there is no sidewalk where the lot is now to the terminal.
Yes, through the chair, Commissioner Peterson, we've actually gone through a pre-application for the design of the parking lot and have been going back and forth to get that design to a point where we satisfy the pedestrian requirements that our transportation department has, as well as other issues, making sure we have EV chargers, getting it to this 10% to 20% design with all of the various departments in the land development team.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Barnwell? Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you, Madam Chair. One question I didn't ask before, but are there any ADA compliance issues associated with disabled people being able to go from the far end of this lot to the terminal, such as will there be available some sort of a motorized vehicle that can take people that are in wheelchairs? You're saying that you've got a sidewalk setup, which I'm sure is ADA compliant all the way. What are those considerations? Did you just say you have charging stations that you're going to put in? Okay. Well, anyway, that's just a topic that I want to be sure that you, that is addressed. Also, and I don't know if this is part of the motion or not, but I would, I would strongly suggest that the findings of this commission and these comments be presented to your airport commission. I would, I would think they need to be kept abreast of all of these various changes, even though you say they're not a planning commission, they kind of, they kind of are. They're certainly a budgetary commission, is that correct?
That is correct.
So the budgetary discussion, which evolved into this, does indeed seem to be part of their purview. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Barnwell. And thank you to my fellow commissioners for all of their questions. I have one other kind of different question. You mentioned, you know, I know we've seen the master plan and had many discussions about the airport. And one of those discussions was about, and this may seem off the wall a little, but it was about, you know, new technology and different types of aircraft that's going to be coming and how we were planning land use to accommodate that in the future. And based on the zoning that it is today, I thought that this was the area that they were considering for this. Is that not the case anymore? And if we're taking that, making it parking, which I'm all for, because I understand the needs of that, but I just want to make sure we're still going to have that other area if this is, if this is the area that was originally proposed for this type of, you know, new technology aircraft that goes up and down, that doesn't need a full runway. Could you speak to that a little bit?
Yes, Madam Chair, you're referring to our EV tolls, which are the technology of the future for airports. And that area is master planned for this top northeastern corner of the airport main parcel. The FedEx building is just down here, of course.
That is very far from where I recall it being. But, okay, so that we're, we still have that, okay, great. Okay, well, I don't have any other questions, other than my fellow commissioners have already noted. Does anyone else have anything? Okay, Commissioner Bauckey?
Graham, what are your comments?
Okay, and we can now move to comments, so Commissioner Bauckey.
Madam Chair and Commissioners, I completely concur with the comments that Commissioner Barnwell said, and I'd like to entertain a discussion or maybe a motion in which would allow this proposal to be expanded southward, basically to where that access road that separates the viewing, so they don't have to come back, because I see that as its future, and why do we want to do this twice? So I want to put that out there. So I support your proposal, but I think we should go basically another 75% farther south down to that. And that makes a good demarcation where that, that access road is, too. So that's my comment, so thank you.
Commissioner Bauckey, through the chair, it's something that I think staff will, will look into, but it's not part of this initiation and it hasn't been noticed properly, so it wouldn't be something that I would want to have a motion. Perhaps we can have another report on it when we come back on consent, just for some informational that it's been discussed.
Could we continue this to another date so they could notice it with an expanded boundary, or is that a option?
Well, the noticing is significant in the amount of work that the airport's put into just this.
Commissioner Wiscombe?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ms. Osteringer, could we have a motion on what we're supposed to be voting on here today to move this forward, which I think we all support, and then add to the motion a consideration for the area south of the parcel under consideration?
You could, for a future consideration.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Great. Do we want to have more of a...
I think study, future consideration and study is probably the best language.
Commissioner, Commissioner DeLucio, you were next, did you want to go?
I totally support that motion, to study potentially expanding the, the scope of the, the land they're going to rezone. And I want to, do want to thank you for all the work you've done on this, and I'm glad you're being, you're thinking ahead to the coastal situation, coastal zone situation, and you're going to do a zoning revision of your coastal document. So I just wanted to throw that out, and thank you.
Commissioner Barnwell?
Well, I would like to clear something up with our legal counsel. When we make this suggestion about their expanding the concept, they don't have to come back to us to say they're expanding the concept, right? They can go ahead and expand that zoning without another meeting with us, is that correct?
No.
I mean, we're now, we're now telling them to go ahead with this particular line of demarcation, but we're also suggesting that they could expand that line of demarcation. Do they have to come back again to us just because it isn't part of our official motion, it's only a comment?
Through the chair, Commissioner Barnwell, my understanding is that they wouldn't, that the purpose of this hearing is to, to have them, your comments on what they are considering rezoning. So this is their proposal, you're making a comment as to your, the thoughts around it, and it could include, you know, expansion or, you know, changes or not, or less than, right? If that was also like, though, I don't think this is appropriate for the whole area that you're looking to rezone. So I think it is appropriate that you include your comments of what you think they should study, and that's part of what they come back with. This is just to initiate that study. They will have to come back with the rezone itself, and so then we would, they could bring back why they came up with what they did, if it was an expansion or reduction, et cetera. But I think this satisfies them to go forward if, if that's the commission's recommendation.
To go forward not only with what they proposed, but to go forward with a possible expansion of what they've proposed.
Correct, if that's what the direction is today.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Commissioner Peterson?
Yeah, thank you. I, just building off of what my fellow commissioners have said, I'm kind of unclear right now. Is that something, in terms of what's being discussed, is that something that you all would entertain or have an interest in? Can I ask it this question? Is this okay?
Yeah, that's okay.
Since we're on the topic.
Yeah.
Thank you, through the chair, Commissioner, we did study that and found that doing the mitigation for taking it out of Galita Slough zoning would be cost preventative, but that was a couple years ago, we couldn't look into it again.
Thank you.
That's very helpful, thank you. Do any, city administration? Nope?
It's me, sorry. So I just wanted to address that, so because there is, there will be an LCP amendment now required for this, so that is, I think, worth exploring if there is interest there, at least, you know, revisiting it. It is also, since that is going to be required, it would be considering, if we're capturing this other area, it'd be changing the land use designation for that area as well, as you mentioned, which is a bigger task, but, so I would like the direction for that item, so that since it'll be separate and different, the initiation of the general, sorry, the LCP amendment direction from your commission, if you'd like to continue to receive that on consent as we were initially planning, or if you'd like to have that, a discussion around it.
Commissioner Barnwell?
Well, I think, I think it's, I think it's worth a discussion, yes, because every time I drive by that sad little viewing area, I think, gosh, how unfortunate, and it could be so much nicer. And an application for a local coastal plan amendment is, shines even brighter when we look at that public component of what we're trying to do. And then it also expands the land use available, and we're already going through all those processes anyway. So that's just, you know, I think it's something to talk about, you know? At least that's my view.
Commissioner Bauckey?
Madam Chair, my comment is, you know, I've dealt with the coast commission for more than 40 years professionally. Go to them once, do not go to them twice. Do not give them any more latitude and choices and ability to lever you. So my suggestion is think about what you would want to do if you had one shot and bring that to us for discussion. Thank you.
Great. Do we have any other comments from fellow commissioners? Do we want to move forward with the motion? Does anyone have a motion? Commissioner Barnwell?
I move the staff report and recommendation. I'll make a second motion for, according to, or can we just add it as comments?
We can include it in that.
Okay. Then if we could also include the comments, I think which were summed up by Mr. Bauckey, which is, since we're doing all this work, give, give it your broadest perspective on what you would like to do, since we're already going to go ahead and do it. And, and that would include a discussion of that additional land and then the viewing area, et cetera.
Study of it.
A study of it, yeah, a study of that.
And I'll second it.
Thank you. Can we please have roll call?
Thank you, Chair Wardlow. I'll begin with Commissioner Wiscombe.
Yes.
Commissioner Barnwell?
Yes.
Commissioner Peterson?
Yes.
Commissioner Bauckey?
Yes.
Commissioner DeLucio?
Yes.
And Chair Wardlow?
Yes.
Motion passes, thank you.
Thank you, and thank you very much for the presentation and for kind of listening to us on our feedback.
Of course, thank you very much.
We will now close that item and move on to the administrative portion of our agenda. Does anyone have any committee liaison reports? Commissioner Barnwell, are you, nope, okay.
I have a staff.
Commissioner DeLucio?
Yeah, I have a staff hearing, officer report from yesterday, actually. So anything I'm talking about today, there's four projects, the meeting went on for three hours. That's why I'm not with it today, I stayed until midnight watching this. So it's, it's any, all these four items, they're all appeal, they can be appealed to the planning commission within 10 calendar days from yesterday. Three of them were pretty straightforward, they were modifications and the three of them were approved, and they were, they have extension, they're not, they're exempt from CEQA. And it was 615 Bath Street, 528 Custetis Road, and 1129 Crestline Drive. These were all approved of just for minor modifications, and they're exempt from CEQA. The, the one that went on for two hours was 3139 Sea Cliff. It was a three-acre lot that was formerly occupied by Rancho Encino, Encino Orchard Greenhouse. It was Rancho Encino Orchard Greenhouse, it was 3139 Sea Cliff. It was for a coastal development permit, however, they need to do a major soil, a rem, soil cleanup there on the site, and however, it is exempt from CEQA. So a lot of the neighbors came out with concerns in regards to that particular site and the cleanup, and so that's where we stand right now, but the hearing examiner, Tess Harris, did approve it with some additional conditions, and I think I'll just leave it at that for now. That's my report, because that may be very well appealed to the planning commission.
Thank you, Commissioner DeLucio. Does anyone have, else have any reports? All righty. Well, thank you, it is now 1:43 PM, and that concludes our October 16th Planning Commission hearing. Our next meeting is tentatively scheduled for Thursday, November 6. Thank you all, and I hope everyone has a wonderful, beautiful day.